Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM, Monday, September 25th. Time for the regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Hamilton Elementary School students, Amaya Allen and Haley Rittendale.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job, thank you. I think we have Principal Kelly Michaels and also Assistant Principal Chris Swanson from Hamilton. Would you like to tell us a little bit about these great students who helped us start our meeting this evening?
So this is Amaya Allen, she's a fifth grader at Hamilton. She's in Mrs. Wade's class. She's been with us since kindergarten. We'll miss her when she's on next year. Amaya lives with her mom and her brother and her catapoo pup named Jax. Amaya's favorite thing about Hamilton are going to the specials classes. And when she grows up, she wants to be a nurse for her little girl. Haley is also a fifth grade student at Hamilton. She is in Mrs. Green's class, also with us since kindergarten. Haley lives with her mom and her dad, Sabrina, her dog, and Comet, the cat. And Haley's favorite thing about Hamilton is how we all try to do our best and be respectful and make it a safe place for everyone. When Haley grows up, she thinks she would like working at Sue Nichols.
Amaya, did you bring anybody with you? Anybody from your family? Did you bring anybody? You'd like to introduce her?
I'm from Korea.
Hi, Mom. Thank you. And Haley, did you bring anyone with you?
About my mom, my dad, and my grandpa.
Welcome and thank you very much. We'd like to get a photograph of you to show how much you've grown since kindergarten. You can stay for the meeting, folks, but you don't have to. Probably have homework to do anyway. Thank you very much and thank you for coming and support. We will now have our roll call, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Albrecht.
Present.
Ms. Abney Mitchell. Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Mr. Neal is in excused absent this evening.
President Cox.
Present.
Six zero.
Thanks, Mel. Nice to see you. Recognitions and presentations is the next issue on our agenda. Dr. O'Feely, or I'm sorry, Superintendent Dr. Dignan.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Board community. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. O'Feely here in a second. I just want to thank our HR team for creating this event, especially Angel Allen, Maria Mitter, Peggy Powers, Julie Rogers, and Dr. Alex O'Feely. It was the first time we've done it. We've recognized nine different of our groups to kind of have the Employee of the Year. It was a phenomenal dinner and well done. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. O'Feely.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. One of the things, oh, good evening, everyone. One of the things that we really get excited about as an HR department is coming up with ways to celebrate the talent that we have across the district. And this is the first year that we were able to do our Employee of the Year. But before I recognize all the Employees of the Year that are in attendance, I do want to thank all of our donors for their generosity because we were able to give some pretty significant gifts and awards to our award recipients because of their generosity. So I want to mention Mesa, Champions Before and After School Program, Michigan Educational Credit Union, ASU Workman's Comp, National Insurance Services, National Vision Administrators, Holden Mifflin, Gallagher, Donald McAllen, Top Cat, Wayne Ford Civic League, Alternate Risk Management, Compton Press Industries, Lombardo Homes, and ADN Dental. We are very thankful for their generosity. I also now want to recognize the Employees of the Year. And this was a very hard decision to make because we had over 100 nominations that came in from different administrators across the district. In order to be an Employee of the Year, you had to be highly effective or effective. You had to go over and beyond in your space. You had to have a nomination letter from your administrator. And again, we were flooded with tons of recommendations and we were able to select some very deserving award recipients. So when I call your name, please stand up and we're going to have you come down afterwards to take a group photo, starting with Kara Bucic, Elementary Teacher of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Diane Fournier, Secondary Teacher of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Sue Cadel, Ancillary Employee of the Year. Jill Nichols, Paraprofessional of the Year. Jamie Hurt, Bus Driver of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Steve Harvey, Custodian of the Year. Let's give him a round of applause. Teresa Perkins, Food Service Worker of the Year. Karen Jordan, Secretary of the Year. And Luwanaki Pete, Student Support Employee of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Now, if we have all of our Employees of the Year come to the front so we can get a photo? Let's give them all a round of applause.
Glad Steve's coming out of his shell.
Yeah.
If anyone else wants to take a picture, let them know. All right, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. O'Feely, and thank you for the excellent program. Appropriate and very well done. Next item on our agenda, 136.24, is the Citizens Comments. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for citizens wishing to address the Board on items which are on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board on agenda items at this time? Seeing no one, I'll move on to the Consent Agenda, 137.24. Is there a motion on consent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, is there any discussion on consent? Roll call, Ms. May.
I just have a really quick question. And taking a look at the field trips, I just was wondering, do we have things in place for students that are not able to afford field trips?
In regards to, for the cost?
Yes, uh-huh.
Sometimes we can reach out to some of our partners to help offset the cost, not being built in internally.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
There's been a motion, support? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero.
Thank you, Mel. 138.24 is Board of Education Committee Reports. First, the Finance Committee, Ms. May.
We are moving. Wasn't ready, sorry. Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools met Thursday, September 14th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM via Zoom platform. Mrs. Polakovich presented Digitalis, Center for Model Schools, and teacher laptops and docking stations. Both curricular and instructional resources, I'm sorry, all curricular and, nope, let me slow down. Both curricular and instructional resources will be purchased using Esser funds. The teacher laptops and docking stations will be purchased using general funds. Mrs. Samaras presented the renewal of a light-speed classroom and light-speed filter. This purchase will be funded with general funds. Dr. Dignan and Mr. Spiezak provided an update regarding the final invoice for Marshall, the transfer of property with the City of Wayne, and the Dog Park easement with the City of Westland. Mrs. Campbell presented the check register. Dr. Dignan and Board Committee members shared closing remarks. The meeting was adjourned at 4:55 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. The next report on our agenda is the Marshall Committee Report. For those that do not know, the Chair appointed a committee of members of the Board to receive offers and inquiries concerning the Marshall property and development of the Marshall property so that the Board had someone that was looking in detail at it before making a recommendation to the whole Board. Mr. Albrecht is the Chairman of that. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, President Cox. So Marshall Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Schools was held Friday, September 20th. That's not right. Date's wrong. But anyway, it was held early September. In attendance were myself, Dr. Dignan, Ms. Kimberly May, Mr. Mark Neal, Mr. Tony Spiezak, and Kim Markey was there as our note taker. We were charged early with just getting basic information. The current status of Marshall Middle School, it's vacant. It was being used by the Westland Library, but they have now moved out of the property. They are still moving books at this time, but they will be completely gone by the end of September. We wanted to know what was the cost of maintaining the property. It's estimated at about $100,000 a year, which includes heating, cooling, and maintaining the building and the yard maintenance around the adjoining property. It's a little over 140,000 square feet of building and 20 acres. Wayne Westland Community Schools wants to demolish the building and had set aside money in the bond that passed for that purpose. So the specific administration recommendation then is to go ahead with that bond proposal. In the short-term demo, the building, go out this winter for an RFP. The recent bond proposal did include the cost of demolishing that building. It was pushed back, though, because the City of Westland was looking to turn the building into an activity center. The meeting adjourned at 4:06 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. I'll have some comments in regards to the Marshall Committee and the Marshall property at the end of the meeting.
Question.
Dr. Weaver.
I want to make sure that by voting to accept this report that I am not agreeing to tear the building down.
Well, we are not going to even vote on the report, just yet receive it.
Well, receive the report, yes. But I want to make sure that I am not agreeing to anything that I'm not agreeing to.
Yeah, there's no such provision on tonight's agenda for anything regarding that.
Question to the President. Have you guys looked into Colliers International? When I worked with the Housing Commission, we had the same problem with the Canterbury Estates where we had money from HUD to demolish it. But they actually are an international company and they deal with large projects like the Hyatt Regency and things of that nature. And they have bidders like World Ride. So I can even give you that information as a secondary because with the Canterbury Estates, I think it was like 900,000, you know? They couldn't sell, they were going to demolish it. So that's another additional way that we can see we can sell it and make money as well. So I'll get you that contact, the Colliers International, and they specialize in.
I would say certainly, you know, our objective, regardless, just so you know my position, even though we have the money set aside for this, we put money aside for this, I'm not wanting to spend $2 million to tear down that building. I don't care if we have the money or not. I'm not anxious to do it. However, it is $100,000 a year that's not educating any children. So at some point in time, we're going to have to look at this seriously. But right now, there's still activity out there in the construction world. They know this property is out there. And I've been contacted that, is what I was going to say at the end of the meeting. So there's still people looking at this. And even though we understand the administration's position, they're in the business of educating children, and an empty building doesn't accomplish that. But we're going to, as far as I'm concerned, Fred, we're exploring every opportunity before we spend one dime destroying that perfectly good building.
Well, just so the President knows that I am not going to vote yes on giving away any more property. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So right now, we are best paying over $100,000 to maintain an empty building?
Yes, right. And the property, and of course, any liability associated with who knows what might occur and all of the other. And it isn't, it's a very well-cared-for property, but it is not a new property.
Right.
And it's built, the construction is such that, and this probably is a conversation we don't need to have right now, but the construction is such that engineers, at least that I've talked with, they're looking for ways to connect new with old, and it's just, it's a challenge.
Okay.
The heating and cooling systems are a challenge. And because we've been in this process and because we're not eager to spend money to destroy anything, even though that might be the smartest move in the long run, we've had a lot of conversations, it seems to be a theme, wouldn't you say, Dr. Dignan?
Yes.
Seems to be a theme, no matter who we talk with, but we're still talking, so.
Okay.
I guess, no other conversation on that? Okay. So the roll call on consent, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms...
Oh, no, we did that. We did that, okay. Oh, I got to introduce Ms. Julie Campbell for the first time. Pleasure to have you here, Ms. Campbell. Going to go ahead and throw it over to you because 139.24 is Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance Items. And Dr. O'Feely was spending a lot of your money, but now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a result of the Finance Committee meeting that Ms. May has reported on, I've got three recommendations to bring to the Board today. The first is the recommendation to approve the service agreement with the Center for Model Schools. This is professional development for three middle school instructional coaches, six administration members, and will focus on center-based instruction, and it also will support middle school teachers. It's for the 2023-2024 school year. The price is $373,470. And that's going to be paid for with Esser III funding.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the service agreement with the Center for Model Schools?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines?
Support.
By Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Campbell?
The next item is my recommendation to renew the light-speed filter and classroom licensing. It's a three-year renewal. It allows remote filtering of our iPad and Chromebook fleets. It's $136,000 for the three years, and that's funded through general fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines?
Support.
Support by Mr. Albrecht, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Campbell?
And my final item is the recommendation to purchase staff technology. Forty-five docking stations, forty-five display monitors, and 60 laptop computers will partially replenish old machines and also provide technology for new staff. This purchase will be $73,770 and will come from Esser III funding. It includes three years of warranty and support.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Was that Ms. May?
Hines.
Oh, Ms. Hines?
Uh-huh.
Support? Support by Ms. Abney Mitchell? Is there discussion?
Yeah, could I ask a question? You may not know this, but somebody may. I've often wondered what happens with the old stuff? When we purchase the new things, what happens with the old stuff? It just goes into a corner somewhere, or what happens?
I don't know the answer to that in this district yet, but...
I'm going to have Tony speak to it, Tony.
Mr. Spiezak?
It's not a tremendous deal, I just had that question.
When a product comes to end of life, it gets recycled as universal waste. So it goes away and we get a small bit of money back and we put it back in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Thank you, Mel. 140.24 is Review and Approval of Human Resource Items, Dr. O'Feely.
Thank you, President Cox. And this happens to be one of my favorite parts of every board presentation. I would like to make a recommendation to the Board for Ms. Emily Fasola to become the next Schweitzer Elementary Principal. Emily comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science from Central Michigan, a Master's of Education from Wayne State University, and she's had experience with us in the district as a teacher and elementary instructional coach. And at this time, I'd like to present to the Board Emily Fasola as our next Schweitzer Elementary Principal.
Thank you, Dr. O'Feely. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, motion carries.
Congratulations. Emily, would you like to come up to the lectern and say hello? Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. O'Feely, Dr. Dignan, for your support and approval and choosing me for this position and for believing in me. Like Dr. O'Feely said, I've been in Wayne Westland since 2013 as a teacher and as an elementary instructional coach, and I'm looking forward to working in this new capacity at Schweitzer. I'm looking forward to working with the Schweitzer students, families, and staff on our district initiatives and to show academic growth and to continue working with our community partners as well. So thank you, Board of Education, for approving me, and thank you, everyone else.
And next up, I would like to make a recommendation to the Board for Matthew Furka to become the next Wildwood Assistant Principal. Matthew comes to us with credentials from Eastern Michigan with a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education, Master's of Arts from Eastern Michigan with Administration Supervision degree. And he has had experience working for us in the district as an elementary teacher. And at this time, I'd like to make the recommendation for Mr. Furka.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion for Mr. Furka?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May? Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, motion carries.
Congratulations.
First off, I'd like to say thanks to Dr. Dignan and Mr. Toko also for believing in me, along with Dr. O'Feely, Ms. Brol, and Ms. Curry, always been on my side and supporting me through my leadership roles and teaching roles within the district. I'd like to thank my Hicks family for coming out and supporting me as I'm leaving one beautiful family and joining another. And I would just like to thank you for the opportunity for me to allow my student-first mindset to carry over to a new school and have a great time at Wildwood. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations, Mr. Furka. Next item on our agenda, 141.24, is the Superintendents Report. Dr. Dignan?
Well, I'm glad I get to talk so quickly. Emily and Matt, congratulations. You guys are going to be phenomenal in your new capacities. And again, thank you for everything that you've given throughout your career to Wayne Westland Schools. The other thing I want to again thank our HR team for a beautiful evening to kind of kick it off with the dinner tonight. It was phenomenal and very impressive, and it was a nice touch to honor and showcase the amazing talent that we have here in Wayne Westland Community Schools. I want to thank everybody that worked on the Military Appreciation Game on Friday night. Both teams had uniforms that kind of signified our armed services. Our bands played the National Anthem together. It was a phenomenal event, and again, we're very grateful to it. Talking about the Zebra Nation, the Zebra Marching Band plays first in Lakeland this Saturday. I didn't know this, but because they were first, they were overall best music, overall best general effect, they have the possibility of maybe going to Northfield for the state championship, which we've never been in. And we have a storied music history at Wayne Memorial. That has never happened. Our Grow Your Own First Cohort update, we have 30 teachers that are going through Eastern Michigan, starting this January, to go and kind of move towards additional certifications. We're very grateful for this grant from the MD, which is over $1 million. We met today, a team of us, with School Craft College. I think our paraprofessional support staff are going to like to hear this. We will have a survey coming out in the next couple of weeks to get paraprofessionals and support staff involved in our Grow Your Own program, which we're very ecstatic about. Our elementary NFL flag and cheer started this weekend. We're up 70 kids in our NFL flag teams. We have over 250 young people taking part in cheerleading, which is phenomenal. I do want to thank all of our buildings because without their support and help in recruiting kids, this doesn't get off the ground. I want a special thank you to Ms. Jenny Johnson, Ms. Maria Mitter, and Mr. Scott Toko. They actually, three years ago, had this concept. They ran with it, they developed it. And now, we probably have more families come out on Saturdays, whether it's NFL flag or basketball season. The turnout is incredible, and our community really enjoys it. I just want to invite everybody, this is kind of our Suicide Prevention Awareness Week. Tomorrow evening at John Glenn High School at 6:00, Kevin Fisher, the creator of Everyone vs. Stigma, is going to be there presenting. It's free to the public, so we hope to see a lot of you out there. SME Prime, we had a ribbon cutting. We have a half-million-dollar donation from SME Prime to buy the latest technology and small manufacturing equipment. It was phenomenal, we had a lot of dignitaries there. Probably one of the best features of this is the curriculum and professional development that they invest in, our staff and students. We have access to Tulane University, which offers 1,700 industry certifications virtually. Everything from welding to HVAC, you name it, they got it. So we're hoping to take advantage of that. We will be meeting with the state later in October to finalize details of a $250,000 driver's education grant, and we'll have more on that. February 12th will be the launch of the John Glenn Hall of Fame. We're excited about this. This has been two years in the making. I want to thank Jason Malloy at John Glenn High School Athletic Director there for organizing it. Anyone may submit a nomination to the Athletic Hall of Fame Selection Committee. The nomination forms must be submitted no later than Monday, October 9th, for consideration in the annual induction class. We will announce our inductees on Friday, November 3rd. Again, we're very excited, this is going to, we're going to have a dinner there, and then we're going to honor them at the halftime of the basketball game. So if you know of people or teams that need to be inducted, please make sure you get your nominations in. One of the cool features that we're going to have is actually an interactive board that, from our Service Learning Grant, that is going to capture the great history of John Glenn High School athletically and all the great people that have gone through there. I think I'll end it on that note and turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. The next item on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, 142.24 is Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. If you wish to address the Board on any item and on any issue at all, it doesn't have to appear on the agenda, now is the time to do so. Anyone, Mr. Beebe? Thank you. We'll move on to Review and Recommendations, Members of the Board of Education. I'll begin with Ms. Luwan, Abney Mitchell.
Okay, first off, I have a comment about the, and I know I probably missed this.
Luwan, will you pull your mic down?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a comment we need to correct last month's agenda. Is there an error in there?
Yeah.
It says that I was present and I was absent, I had to excuse absent? August 21st agenda.
Okay, we got it.
Okay. So I would first like to thank the Hamilton students that came... So I would first like to thank, um, the Hammonton students that came out today. And I also would like to thank the Hammonton staff that invited us to their fall festival. Um, unfortunately, I know I did and some of the other board members already had something on our schedule and I wasn't able to go, but I like to encourage the schools and the teachers to keep the invites coming. And as we are available, we will come out and support anything that your school has going on. And, um, I'd like to, um, once again, say congratulations to the Employees of the Year. And last week, Tuesday, I contacted Superintendent's Office about a bus issue for the students in Inkster. Um, and I talked to Kim and, um, by that same day, I also, the Transportation Supervisor Chad contacted me. Um, Dr. Dignan cha- contacted me, but by, um, Friday, we had a resolution. Um, apparently the bus was a little overcrowding and like, um, because I live, work, and play in Inkster, go to church, and people see me and say, I had to get off the bus. It was too crowded, you know? But I encouraged them that when there's a problem, the only way that you can change it is that you speak up. If you're keeping it to yourself and complaining to your friends, that's not going to solve it. You have to go to the correct people and I called Kim. She was the correct person. And she said, and she said, now see, I, me and Kim got a little good relationship because she came from Inkster David Hicks. So I have my people I can go to, her, her, her and Ms. April, anytime. Cause I'm not the person, you know, I got bad, a little bad. I'm not a person. I don't like emails. I like to talk to people and see if they want to talk to me. And if they having a bad day, I like to tell them a joke to make them feel better. So I'm not really a email person because you'll get a whole lot of emojis and it's just like, so I like to hear your voice and know that, you know, I'm kind of old school, still got a house phone and, you know? But I appreciate, I appreciate the, um, efforts. I appreciate the way that the district works together, you know? I appreciate when Dr. Dignan sent us an email on Sunday morning and I'm like, why this man is not enjoying his family? I appreciate it and I say, mm-mm, that wouldn't be my husband. I just want y'all to know, I just, you know, if I had to give out the, um, awards of the year, you know, everybody will get one because I feel like in the Wayne Westland School District, we have a good working environment. And since I've been here, nobody, um, hesitated to work with me. I know the first couple of meetings, I brought my bodyguard and then he dropped off, but, you know, I can start bringing them back. I just, I just appreciate y'all and I appreciate everybody that's working together. And Ms. G, I'm coming to David Hicks, you know, to support David Hicks this year, but, um, and that's one of the other things that I'm trying to, you know, I'm speaking around in Inkster and of course, I, you know, um, Mr. Cox, he's a phone call away and he say, Luana, remember your role. I say, I'm so glad I got you to tell me to remember my role because I would like to see David Hicks, Helen, and others to be a one-way. It needs to be a one-way. Our staff is out there directing traffic and it would just be that one day that that parent that got to go to work because they can't be late no more because they own, own, own discipline already. This late right here, go, I'm gonna be gone. I've been there before, so I understand. And that, and, and she just zoom past that staff, you know, and I just hate to see that happen. But I'm talking to, um, you know, different people to see, you know, I just informed the superintendent, he already ready to go. Look at me, just found out, he ready to go. You know, just talking to different people in Inkster, um, Department of Public Works and see, you know, how we can make that happen, even if it's just during, um, school hours. And the last thing is my church, New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church in the city of Inkster, we are starting a socks, gloves, and hats um, drive to collect to, um, well, before I got, before I went to that church, they had adopted these two charter schools. And I said, well, no, we got to put David Hicks in there. So now we collecting socks, gloves, and hats for three different schools, but we gonna take care of Hicks first. Thank you. So we hoping to have him all ready before Thanksgiving. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Luana.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. May?
So, um, for me, I just want to say thank you to Amaya and Haley for leading the pledge. They did an awesome job. Um, congratulations to our Employees of the Year. That was just a very nice way to kick off the school year. Um, very nice dinner. H R team, you did a phenomenal job, um, just acknowledging and, and recognizing. So thank you for that. And I also like to say congratulations to Mrs. Fios- Fiosa?
Fassoa.
Fassoa, I'm so sorry. And to Mr. Furka and your new appointments. And, um, yeah, and just thank you to everyone, you know, as we're feeling like we're kind of in a groove of being back to normal, for real back to normal. So fingers crossed that we stay that way and just energy feels good. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. May. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I like to say it's been a great week. I enjoyed the football game and the rivalry. Even though I went to Wayne Memorial and it was like fifty-one and zero, Rockets did a good job. Um, I also, uh, was excited. I was able to participate in the S M E event over at the Career Tech. It was amazing, the robotics. And as my local, uh, board members and staff members know, I love to post positive things about Wayne Westland on my Facebook. I get super excited. I put it on my stories to generate a lot of, you know, talk and tell them how we are doing innovative things in Wayne Westland. So today I was able to, uh, be a mentor. I have a girlfriend. She has a nonprofit called Cupcake Princesses. So we was in Detroit Schools over at Cody, you know, mentoring to the girls and just looking at the different buildings like from Wayne Westland in Detroit. It's like night and day. So I was just talking to, uh, trustee Luana saying how beautiful our buildings are and how lucky our students are in the advancement and what we have, even the love of the staff. Like today at the employee rec- uh, recognition or dinner, I love what you guys do. Employee morale is important. Like each of the teachers, I mean, the hard, even the custodians, bus drivers, they had like a little tear in their eye because it was just like, wow, I was appreciated. You know, it just made people feel good. And that's what we need in our environments. We need to feel like a family. We need to feel good. We want to be able to come to work. Um, you guys pay really well. I was telling people, they're paying bus drivers twenty-one dollars an hour we're hiring. So, you know, that's really nice, you know, to work for a school district, make good pay, have good benefits, have good morale, different events. Um, also, uh, I'm in this organization called the Top Ladies of Distinction and we have a group called Top Teens of America. So we're doing some recruiting. It's almost like a little, like fraternity sorority, like for the kids to do a lot of community service, a lot of things in the community. So we're actually taking applications and it's nice for the, uh, kids. They start you at the B before you're senior, but it's nice on your resume, not resume, but like when you go into college, you know, different applications and it helps, you know, in the community. And I'd like to congratulate our new staff members for today. And let's see. And, oh, and one more thing too. So, um, I was talking to some of the teachers and found out that one of our students, um, was the student that created the patch that's going to be on the astronaut to go to the International Space Station. Yes. So we are trying to raise money, do fundraisers. So we're working with this organization. We're, you know, asking around, trying to find different things to try to help support that goal. Like if it's a GoFundMe, um, there's an organization, that girl Natasha Lee, she has a relationship with the Pistons, Tigers, and the Lions. And so what we've been doing, they have like, you know, discounted tickets for the families. Matter of fact, we have forty tickets for tomorrow, so I can have her shoot an email for the, the Tigers game tomorrow. And then they also have a program. They work with a lot of nonprofits. So there's one organization, if the school district qualifies for free lunch, they give the kids a free tablet, a free phone, an internet service of five dollars a month, and it's like twenty dollars. There's a fundraiser. They cut a big check to the school district. So we're always trying to find innovative ways, different organizations to partner with. And last week I met with a guy, I used to work at Fifth Third Bank and I did a lot of stuff with the, um, Plymouth Chamber of Commerce. So I met a guy from this company called Funnel. It's a consulting firm. And so in Plymouth, uh, the Michigan Economic Development, like the headquarters is in there. It's a business incubator. But they had all this amazing like medical, uh, experimental, like research and development, like different things that we don't really, you know, have. So I always like to look for different partnerships. So definitely want to get you guys connected with that organization because like those different like size, I think it used to be Pfizer or something, but there's that different thing to have our kids to be exposed to and they do internships and things of that nature. So I definitely want to work on the relationship to add, you know, more companies that we can have our kids be exposed to.
Thanks, Mel. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to, um, appreciate the, um, um, Employees of the Year and they have done incredible, uh, work as well as almost everyone else in the district. I'm looking at you, Curry. Yeah, okay. I'm just, Ms. Curry does a wonderful job. I'm just teasing with her. But, um, I appreciate, uh, this program, Dr. O'Feely, and, um, and am thankful for it. Congratulations to our students that led us in the pledge. And also I'd just like to say tonight that as a board, we are certainly to be supportive of administration and the good things happening in this district. Our Superintendent has done a phenomenal job, uh, at introducing new partnerships and new ideas, uh, into the district. And that's a, a wonderful thing. As a matter of fact, I'm trying to figure out how he keeps all the balls in the air and, uh, and juggling all the time, the new things that are coming to the district. But never let us forget as board members that we have the right to ask that our thoughts mean something and that we should always be aware that we serve the public trust as well. People voted us into our positions to know what the truth is behind our district and to, uh, operate accordingly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President Cox. Uh, thank you, Amaya and Haley, uh, for leading us in the pledge. Did a great job. Uh, congratulations to all of our District Employees of the Year and especially thank you, Dr. O'Feely. You, your directors and staff that put that together, uh, certainly something we've needed for a long time, probably didn't think about. And we're glad you did. So thank you. Congrats, uh, to Emily and Matt, uh, on joining our administrative team. We know you'll do a, a great job for us. Um, I never ever say anything about anything that's not directly related to the district, but today I'm going to. I act as a grant chairman for a charitable organization called the Wayne One Hundred Club. Uh, there's a number of people in the community, uh, that are members of the Wayne One Hundred Club. We give grants to people in emergency scenarios that are in dire need, up to five hundred dollars, one time in a lifetime. We have paid light bills, water bills, help pay rent. Uh, I've met a father at a pharmacy to get medication so his kid could go to school the next day. The grant applications should be in every one of our schools offices. If you come across somebody that, you know, the little kid says, my mommy needs help. And I, I break down sometimes when I talk about some of the stories. Remember that that application sits there. My email address is at the bottom. You get it to me. We pay the grants within twenty-four hours, that fast. I get a hold of the Board of Directors via text and email. They answer me back as soon as they see it. Uh, and we take care of some pretty important things. We have our time though, if we can't bail them out of the actual, the whole thing. Somebody owes two thousand dollars. Our five hundred's not going to matter. But in those things where they need some help right now, they're going to turn the lights off, get a hold of somebody in your school. Somewhere in that school is an application. And if not, use my district email address and I'll get one sent to you. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Thank you for all the things you do for this community. Uh, Dr. O'Feely, the, the nine people that received an award this evening were roughly ten percent of the number of people that were nominated. Uh, was it a hundred or?
Over a hundred.
In the process where people were, uh, nominated, where a coworker nominated them, correct?
An administrator.
An administrator. So that means there's a hundred employees in this school district that went home that day and found out that an administrator thought enough of their work that they wanted to nominate them. So even the people that didn't win the award, they won. That kind of thing, as Dr. Weaver said, i- it's so important that, uh, every time I look out just in the audience and every single person could be singled out in this school district and what you do is you just don't have time to single everybody out. But, uh, what you did, I think, was very important for, for everybody. And I think it's something that I hope to see it continue year after year. So really appreciate that. It was great to have kids in the room. Uh, we haven't had that since the summer, so, uh, it's great to have them in the room. It's also great to have people, uh, stand up to leadership. That's what we need in this school district. We need people who have the experience that you have in the classroom to step up from this school district and be a principal. So that was, those are two really easy votes for me. Congratulations to both of you. And with that, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Beebe, for keeping the evening short by not saying anything. Welcome, Julie Campbell. We're so fortunate to have someone with your background here in our school district. I think, uh, I'm, I'm gonna pair it with what Dr. Weaver said. I think it's a tribute to our Superintendent because why would you want to work for somebody that didn't have the same goals? So, thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Support by Mr. Albrecht. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.